Uh, back several, two, uh, next round, right there. Call this meeting of the Centraria Board of Alderman to order. We'll call, we'll, we'll take it.
Alderman Gorman.
Here.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Madley.
Here.
Alderman Laura.
Here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Loken.
That's what I was going to do.
Alright, we have a forum tonight. Please join me in place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Consent agenda? Want you to have their, uh, in that packet?
I got one correction.
Okay.
Um, let me see where it is. On, uh, on the first page, down in the, uh, two, two, right before John Angel entered the meeting, it wasn't me who was going to go through the building. I think it was, I had a question, was supposed to go to John.
No, it was Jerry.
Yeah, it was. Okay, but wasn't it me? Right. Alright, thank you.
Motion, we accept the consent agenda with the one.
So, okay. And motion second to accept the consent agenda has changed, although it's fair to say that. Aye. Opposed? Account payable over twelve fifty? Any questions on that?
Take a motion to accept the accounts payable over twelve fifty in the amount of two hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second. Alright, I have a motion, a second to accept the accounts payable over twelve fifty in the amount of two hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Although it's fair to say that. Aye. Opposed? Alright, uh, proclamation for, uh, Eagle Scout. Colton, if you can, park over there.
So, the Eagle Scout Colton Edward Hamilton. Whereas, Boy Scouts highest honor is achieving the Eagle Scout Award, and only one percent of all scouts ever achieve this rank. And whereas Eagle Scouts act as leaders and role models within the community, it takes years of dedication and commitment to achieve the Eagle rank. And whereas, on May tenth, two thousand fourteen, Boy Scout Colton Hamilton of Troop Ninety is recognized by the Boy Scouts of America for successfully completing all the requirements for Eagle Scout, Scouting's highest rank. And whereas, the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout his life, and will be a beacon to others of similar leadership quality and commitment. It represents a significant accomplishment, having completed the requirements for, and having been examined by the Eagle Scout Board of Review, Colton Hamilton was not worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout. Now therefore, I, Tim Greinke, Mayor of the City of Centraria, Missouri, do hereby recognize and congratulate Colton Hamilton for his outstanding achievement of the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud to have him as a member of our community. Signed and sealed in my office, May tenth, two thousand fourteen. Thank you very much.
Don't worry yet. If you take a second and, uh, tell the board what your Eagle Scout project was?
Um, I did, I redid the flower boxes out there.
Okay.
I made all eight of them. I took and I got rid of the old ones, and then I completely made brand new ones. And I set them out there and send that to them.
And, uh, who's, who's with you here tonight?
That is my father.
Alright. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
And they do look much better?
Yes, very much. Alright. Now I have one, uh, additional proclamation to read for Memorial Day. You know, Memorial Day weekend is coming up. Whereas, the Congress of the United States of America has designated May thirtieth Memorial Day to honor our veterans. Whereas, the veterans of the United States, having been the guardians of our fundamental rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and the city of Centraria sincerely desires to honor the valor, service, dedication, and heroism of its veterans and those missing in action. I now there, I therefore proclaim this day, May thirtieth, our day to call all citizens of this community to especially honor and show their sincere appreciation to all veterans, and especially honor our men and women who have made this supreme sacrifice. I wish to call on all citizens to make an effort to express their thanks and give their honors and to and for the men and women who have made it possible for all people in this country to live in such a free, democratic society that we are so fortunate to have in this great nation. With my most profound feelings, I have signed this day this proclamation of the City of Centraria, State of Missouri, and witness, herefore, the seal and signature of the city are fixed. So, I appreciate you all the veterans in the city and in this state. And as you know, we're celebrating Veterans' Day on May twenty-sixth. So, the actual Veterans' Day is, wait, there it is. Memorial Day. Memorial Day, my day. Alright. Thank you. Alright, this time I'll, uh, open the floor for comments from the citizens. Uh, if you could place the microphone, is it working? Yes, and we would like to, uh, first, I guess, limit your comments from citizens to anything except amending the city code and, uh, the one-way street stuff going on by the school. If you have any other additional comments from citizens, decide those two things. Let's feel free to pop them. Public carries? Amending the city code, chapter thirty point one concerning subdivision of land. Someone have any comments on that? Will anyone preface that?
For the record, nobody that I'm aware of has come in and reviewed the, uh, our copy of the proposal in person. I received no written or verbal comments since the time that the P and Z made recommendations that these amendments be made. So, we have, uh, an ordinance prepared that basically repeals the whole current subdivision after and adopts a new.
Okay.
Uh, the changes were extensive enough that we couldn't just do this piecemeal section by section.
Right.
Did you officially open the public carry? Did we need to have an official public carry?
Yeah.
When you asked for comments, you didn't say.
Alright, I'll open the floor for the public carry.
Sorry.
Alright, the discussion on the amending the city code. I know that P and Z made, uh, several meetings about that and made the recommendation to the council. So... Alright. What's that?
Speaking hours for the old.
Yes. Okay, uh, when we're talking about the, uh, one-way street, if you have a comment, please stand, approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And, uh, with the amount of people we have here, if they can keep their comments, maybe five minutes or less.
My name's Bob Reeves. I'm the Chance Elementary Principal. Uh, of course, this is my third year as elementary principal, and, uh, of course, it's a kindergarten through secondary school. But we have a lot of students that get picked up and dropped off in the mornings and afternoon. Alright. I've had some complaints in the past, but not near as what I've had here in the last, oh, since, well, since I came back, since I broke my hip in February. Then I've had, oh, I'd say four or five parents, you know, really concerned about kids, you know, when they get dropped off, or that people won't stop and almost getting hit. Matter of fact, I had a physical education teacher had to follow card just to see, you know, who one of them is and everything like that. Um, you know, we never had a crosswalk person in the morning doing it out there. And then we do that crosswalk and they can drop off in the front, but we also, before eight o'clock, they drop off on Collier Street over in the kindergarten lane, which is the north side. That way, some of my bus kids can come in that door too, so we don't clog up the parking lot. And, uh, so I started doing crosswalk duty here the last, oh, three or four weeks, because, you know, the bottom line is, and Coach Geno's made a great comment, he says, even for forty years since lived over there, and I know Mr. Cox, and a lot of these people have, we have never had anybody hit over there. I mean, you know, thank goodness and everything. You know, the biggest thing I'm concerned with is that I don't want a burden on my shoulder if we did have a kid get hit. I mean, that's the bottom line. And, uh, you know, uh, that's when I started talking to my S R officer, and, you know, they mentioned that would be a, a solution. I'm not saying it is the right solution, I don't know as far as the one-way street. I just want that area to be safe for our kids and everything. I, we were kinda locked in, so I mean, there's, you know, really, there's not much I could really do. I mean, we can make them, and I talked to Mr. Megan, he came in visiting with him, and, you know, he knows, he and I know each other, and I appreciate his voice, and I, like I said, I know these people here, and I appreciate their voice and everything like that. I know he talked about a solution, about making a drop-off area, but again, even if we made it a drop-off area in the front, I still gonna have kids cross the crosswalk. And so, and it's, it's still not gonna eliminate the problem. Like I said, I, I'm not here to stir up anything. I love these people here very much. They're very, very good neighbors for our school, because, like I said, we got a lot of kids over there and everything like that. But I, I just, I don't have a good solution, and I just want something to be safe for our kids and everything like that. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Next.
How many minutes did you give me?
Oh.
You better give him about five minutes. I'm Jim and, uh, she's Jenny Inlow, and we live at Seven Row, the two fourth. Uh, we have a letter here where we attended this meeting ten years ago about this same issue. And I don't remember anybody making any meetings or studies or anything on it, and now here we're doing the very same thing ten years later. We were opposed to this change then, and today we still are opposed to it. If my calculation's correct, there are less students at Chance Elementary today than there was ten years ago. Because we opened a new school, we took two grades out there. It is correct that you've moved your preschool into your building now?
That's correct.
Where they were housed in a little white house over there. Uh, I know on the east side, there's less cars today causing congestion than there was ten years ago. We counted, I think, today thirteen or fifteen open parking spots during the day. Those that weren't open, if they would go across the park in the teachers' parking lot that the school made, that whole block of Collier would be open for parking. When they have programs, we have much less traffic than we used to have. When they had some kind of a program in the past, we could not get in and out of Worthington Court in the evening. Now, nobody parks in Worthington Court. Compared to the twice-a-day drop-off and pick-up of students while school is in session, we as a resident will be affected twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. Like in our case, we go both ways. So, it wouldn't make any difference for us, whether it's north or south, we're gonna be, have to go out of our way to get where we wanna go. We have some health problems, we go to Columbia. We're gonna go to Columbia every day this week. So, if you make it going north, then we gotta go up and around the elementary building to get out. If you make it going south and we wanna come to town, we gotta do that. Plus, you're gonna throw us either onto Rollins Street, which is gonna have more traffic, or you're gonna throw us over on Lakeview, which has become the main traffic fan in our community. Therefore, we ask that you do not make this change to one-way streets on Collier and Rollins. Thank you for allowing us to voice our opinion.
My name's Scott, I also live on the Wreeden Court. And I think Jim just got covered everything I had to say. At the same time, I'll just say that I'm in full support of what he said. I don't see a one-way street as being a safety improvement. Two cars, two lanes going one direction equals two lanes going in opposite directions, to me. Uh, I would be in support of some, something that actually I feel is a, a safety improvement, but this issue, I'm, I'm in favor. Thank you.
I'm Harvey Million, uh, my wife Stacy's here through the five-thirty South Collier. I think, you know, we're all with Bob, you know, we're concerned about student safety as well. I think you know us, we've all been involved in many aspects of the community, support the schools in a lot of ways. Um, I would like to say that we're not in favor of the one-way proposal, one-way street proposal. Jim does have a very good point. He, he talked about the Collier side. I also, since I read about this Wednesday, have been counting the cars on the street that are parked there. There were thirty-four cars, uh, parked in the street on Thursday and thirty on Friday. There were six cars in the, in the lot for, uh, the school parking, and there were five on Friday. So, I think that it would be a good idea, maybe, if we, rather than making any radical changes, I, I went and talked to Chief a little bit as well, talked to Don Gorman, that the problem is really narrowed down to two times a day. It's about half an hour in the morning and half an hour in the evening. I don't know, Bob, how you ever get around the crossing walk situation. I, you know, there's always been kids crossing at the corner even. Uh, when Dr. Brown was here, he was actually crossing walk guard every morning. So, yeah, I think as long as you have students in crossing walks, you're gonna have a concern with kids, uh, not, maybe not looking or cars not seeing them. But I do think that if we could free up some parking on the streets, then maybe the congestion might be relieved some, uh, maybe significantly. We're done with thirty cars, if we could get off the street, um, you.
Go ahead. How, how many parking spaces are there, is the school parking lot?
Uh, I would, I would guess you could put twenty in, and then the school also owns a lot on northeast corner. That could, you know, I think that could.
Our heavy, our heavier traffic's really on Rollins Street than it is on Collier. I mean, I, there's times, and like you said, I know it's just twice a day, but I'm sorry, Harvey, I don't.
No, 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 I, I'll say that too.
I can't answer. To be honest with you, I can't answer how many park, but we do have a parking lot across the street where the old, um, preschool's at. Okay, and talking about staff parking there. But the, the cars just, just line up. They don't pull off to the side, they just line up.
No matter what you do. No matter what we do, we're not having much. We are, we're an issue from middle school too. And, and we just keep getting together and really racking our brains to try and make progress. You know, ten years ago, we made improvements, obviously, and helped. And I think we, we need to look at it. But I, I don't think that something as radical as one-way street is necessarily the solution for a problem that maybe isn't. The root cause isn't that large. So, you know, uh, I'm, again, we have a long way around saying we're not in favor of it, but maybe there's, there's some other things we could look at, maybe some things the school could look at before we go to plan the neighbors and people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Charlotte Mashin. My husband and I have lived on Collier, well, it's Sin Street, but it's right in Collier. We've lived there for over ten years. Both of our sons went to the elementary school. We've not had any trouble with, you know, them feeling not being safe crossing, because they do use the, we live right across the street, so they use the crossing guard back and forth. Um, I don't think turning it into a one-way street is gonna help on safety, if safety is the main issue. I do think it is, is parking. I have not even seen less parking since they had the new parking garage, or parking over on the other side of the school. I haven't seen it less than right where I'm at. And where I'm close to is right by the crossing, crossing, uh, crossway. And I'm thinking that that's more dangerous having a car already parked there when people drop off, because you can, you know, a kid could be standing there and you won't even see them when they walk out. So, to me, I think that's way more of an issue than making it one-way. And I mean, my thing is, you know, if we thought it was gonna help, I would be for it. My husband and I discussed it, and I don't want it to be limited to where it can go one way or the other. But I mean, I think there's other ways we can, other things we can talk about. But, um, so far, I think that just, you know, crossing, changing the direction of traffic isn't the way to go.
Thank you. Could you say your address briefly?
Two oh six East Seventy.
Alright, thank you. Okay, any, uh, anything else? I appreciate y'all coming out tonight. Yes, sir.
I did receive a telephone comment this morning from Don Rush.
Okay.
Who also indicated he was against the proposal. But like Mr. Inlow, he remembered the proposal being made once before. He remembered it there being a one-week trial of this. I, it's not clear in my mind that there actually was a trial, but that's why he remembered it, and he remembered that it was terribly successful. He has talked to many of the people here, so, um, he said they shared his viewpoint, and that's been ratified. And he also, um, thought that a greater effort should be made to get the teachers to park in the existing parking lots and not in the street, and that will give thorough lines of sight. So, he and his wife are against it.
Thank you. Alright, again, I appreciate y'all coming out and, uh, expressing your concerns to the council. And, uh, yes, sir.
Will there be a vote this month on this, or?
Uh, probably not tonight. This is more of a public carry, so we can get some feeling from the, uh, from the community, those that are most affected.
Every now and then we'd like to do something controversial, just so we get people in here.
Yes.
I did bring a copy of a letter that you all sent us in two thousand and four.
I see that a lot.
Thank you very much.
Jim has come up with a great idea though, that he had that overpass, uh, walking overpass down Douglas Park at, uh, in Columbia. If I had from them, I think that would extend from the school, might get all the way over into your yard. And I would certainly take care of the problem.
Could be just as successful as what's in.
I thought Jim wanted to try it on Jefferson Street first.
I wrote that down, that you have confidential.
You should put that over at Bob's, like at Bob's.
Was that the direction or?
We appreciate your time.
We'll probably re-discuss this, uh, again on the second Monday of next month, our public taping, General Government. It will probably be voted on the next meeting, if we have a vote at all.
You'd be instructed to proceed.
Yeah.
And then we could vote on it, make it a.
Right, but that wouldn't happen until the full council meeting in June. That's the third one. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. We'll come up. See you guys.
Alright. Okay, I closed the public carry. Is that everybody?
Still waiting to be on the paper.
We'll get right on it, second Tuesday next week.
So, then there's next going here.
Okay, action agenda, finance, nothing scheduled?
Still the same.
Same for permit and license?
Still the same.
Legal? Repealing chapter thirty dot one of this Centraria city code and enacting a new chapter thirty of the Centraria code concerning the subdivision of land ordinance. So, the ordinance requires two readings. Any further discussion? Paul and Lee, would you introduce this one, please?
I think Alderman Gorman should introduce this one, because he put so much work in it.
Okay, Alderman Gorman, please introduce this one, please.
Bill number, please.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Alright, ninety-one seventy-five. Twenty-seven hundred. Alright, I move that bill number twenty-seven hundred be given as first reading by title only.
Second.
And motion second that bill number twenty-seven hundred be given as first reading by title only, although it's fair to say that. I oppose. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to repeal chapter thirty point one of the Centraria city code on subdivision of land, and to enact a new chapter thirty point one of the Centraria city code on land subdivision. I move that bill number twenty-seven hundred be given as second, uh, reading by title only.
Second.
And motion second that bill number twenty-seven hundred be given as second reading by title only, although it's fair to say that. I oppose. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to repeal chapter thirty point one of the Centraria city code on subdivision of land and to enact a new chapter thirty point one of the Centraria city code on land subdivision. I move that bill number twenty-seven hundred, uh, be adopted by roll call votes.
And the motion second that bill number twenty-seven hundred be adopted by roll call votes, although it's fair to say that. I oppose. Roll call votes, please, please.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Madley.
Yes.
Alderman Laura.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Loken.
Four.
Alderman Gorman.
Yes. Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven hundred passes, now becomes ordinance number.
Twenty-seven sixty.
Twenty-seven sixty. Alright. Purchasing contract with Chance Foundation for Care and Help Keep of the A B Chance and Mausoleum.
Is it in order?
Okay, let's crash that.
Uh, they got together and had legal advice that it probably would endanger their tax status if they did this. So, we will continue with the existing contract. We won't be able to save them money, but, um...
Okay, shall we table it, if that's what you'd like, so?
It's never been introduced.
Okay. No, that's fine. Thank you. Various electric distribution system materials.
You should have two separate bid tab sheets. First one would be for underground primary wire. And the low bidder there is Arkansas Electric. We're talking about two thousand five hundred feet for the sum of four thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Small coin.
Yes.
You might want to take them separately.
Yes. Motion would be in order?
Sum of to accept it from Arkansas Electric in the amount of four thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second. I have a motion, a second to accept the bid for number two U R D fifteen K V wire in the amount of, uh, twenty-five hundred feet in the amount of four thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Although it's fair to say that. I oppose. Alright.
And the other was for, um, three different sizes of conduit. And the low bidder here is Fletcher Reinhardt, another frequent supplier for us in the amount of two thousand six hundred fifteen dollars and five cents.
Okay. Question I had when I was looking at this was... Question I had when I was looking at this was Butler Supply from Mexico. They are a little bit higher on the bid. I think it's because of the hundred fifty-dollar shipping charge. And I don't know, is that something that we could go there and pick up ourselves without?
Stop for a hundred fifty dollars?
I don't know. So they're gonna charge us a hundred fifty dollars a shipper here from Mexico?
It costs us more and go do that very good for a hundred fifty dollars.
That's just a question I have. If not, then the motion would be in order to accept the wall of state?
I make a motion to accept the bid from Fletcher Reinhardt in the amount of two thousand six hundred fifteen dollars and five cents for various sizes of PVC conduit in the street.
And motion to second to accept the bid from Fletcher Reinhardt for various sizes of PVC conduit in the amount of two thousand six hundred fifteen dollars and five cents. All those who favor this act?
Aye.
Propose. Thank you. Hold business. I have not been able to get all the.
Yeah, I called.
Maybe you want to see.
Yeah.
Maybe you called it back.
He was definitely there on Friday.
What did he?
I didn't have control very well.
Okay. I was, I'm just saying that.
He might have answered.
He screams his phone.
He said he called the city.
Okay, well, we'll try and get that done next week or two. I'll be out for the first two weeks of gym, so I'll be here before that or after that. All right. I do have a few appointments tonight for the park board. Talked with Mike Kincaid and the three park board members that are up for, their term expires this year. Have agreed to be reappointed. So I'd like to reappoint Harold Beasley to the park board for a term of three years, beginning June first.
Aye.
Second.
And motion to second to accept the marriage appointment of Harold Beasley to the park board for three years. All those who favor this act?
Aye.
Propose. Okay, same thing for Dale Davidson.
Second.
And a motion to second to accept the appointment of Dale Davidson to the park board for three years. All those who favor this act?
Aye.
Propose. All right, and once again for Mike Kincaid.
Second.
All right, and motion to second to accept the marriage appointment of Mike Kincaid to the park board. All those who favor this act?
Aye.
Propose. All right, and to fill the vacancy vacated by Dick Ward would be elected. Marilyn Dick has agreed to serve the remainder of Dick's term.
Which is twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, right. This'll be another year. And a motion to second to accept the appointment of Marilyn Dick to the park board with a term expiring in twenty fifteen. All those who favor this act?
Aye.
Propose. All right, thanks very much. Those are students tonight. Oh, yes. For the Memphis Valley Management District, I'll go ahead and appoint myself to that council.
There's a vacancy created by Alderman Simmons, not being an Alderman in Alderman.
Yep.
He's currently the person that did that. So move.
Second.
And a motion to second to accept the marriage appointment of himself to Memphis Valley Management District. All those who favor this act?
Aye.
Propose. Unless somebody else wants it to last here for that, I'll do it. Do you have a minute? Uh, no, I haven't yet. Okay, I think that's all the appointments I have for this evening. Yeah, I'll talk to the library. Okay, any Alderman have new business?
I could bring it up during my time, but I mentioned before about their vacancy on the Doc Hearing Board, and that's somebody, somebody who an Alderman would be selected for that position.
Why are you looking away?
If anyone would care to.
They would like to.
To be.
I'm already on.
I know.
That's.
That's something that's agreed on by the board. I don't have to say them. I guess.
That's correct.
Okay.
So would you need a motion for a pointer?
Yes.
Well, then I move to appoint Andrea Horat to the.
Okay.
The hearing board.
Second.
Motion to second to appoint Andrea to the hearing board. All those who favor this act?
Aye.
Propose. Thank you. Okay. Lynn, do you have anything?
No. In passing, they started with upgrading the equipment.
Okay.
They're striking as much as they can in preparation for actual testing. First of all, crosswalks and parking areas, but we haven't came on hand to do center stripes hopefully for the vehicles, so.
Okay.
And.
Did the bike lanes along Jackson Avenue?
They will, when they have the equipment, they will, and they will do them slightly wider than last time.
Okay.
Maybe another foot wider.
All right, thank you.
Lastly, the street that goes by the bus park is currently, if not officially, Fairgrounds Road. And that duplicates a street in Sturgeon, and Joint Dispatch doesn't really like duplicate street names. I mean, some time ago, I agreed with them that we would rename it. And we've even had signs up with an alternate name for about six months. But before I leave, I think I ought to make sure that it's changed legally. I was holding off, because one other needs to be changed, but it will be changed to Fairground without the street.
All the other streets, sorry, power or street, I think?
Well, we got some drives and some ports in.
Most have a little more.
Most have more streets, but there are a few drives.
All right.
So the process is that I will put a notice in the paper if we don't, in your direction. And if we don't have petitions from people living on the street in four weeks, then you can make the change by ordinance.
Okay. All right, Mary, it's your turn.
I was gonna bring up about the Doc Hearing Board, but that's been taken care of, so I don't have anything else.
I would point out that at least our fairground is on fairground. Yes, Sturgeon's is not.
Rollins too, not either. Okay. Are we gonna be sending a packet to settlement anytime soon?
Yes, yes.
Of change and stuff?
Yes.
All right. All right, Heather, it's all yours.
Just wanted to mention that I sent all of the R S B Ps for the email meeting on the twenty-eighth, so you all should have had those, should have gotten an email confirmation. If not, let me know. And then I'll make sure that I still let my head down. But everyone, I did get confirmation.
Had anybody indicated that they were going to go to the newly-elected officials conference?
I looked at, it's in Columbia this year, it looks like.
Is it in Columbia?
Mm-hmm.
You're Johnson Jefferson?
Yeah. So, I mean.
I don't?
Sure.
All right.
All right. At this point, I can't be an answer. Heather, can you respond for Andrea at least?
Yes.
We'll save money this way. We won't have to pay for a hotel room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fair deal.
All right, can you add me a rise?
I move re-adjourned.
Nah.
Oh, yeah.
Would we like to move to recess?
Oh, recess.
Until seven o'clock on Monday, the second.
I move we recess until, you say, June?
June second.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a part. Okay, motion?
Second.
And a second to recess until June second at seven o'clock or six thirty?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock? Okay.
It's on for all trip.
All right. Motion to second to recess till June second at seven o'clock. All those who favor this act?
Aye.
Propose.